Perfume tonight. The way we conduct meetings, if uh if you're one of the petitioners were to call you up to the podiums. Hey, just state your name and address for the record. And we'll store you in it because all testimony is taken under oath. Anybody in the audience that has a question? Raise your hand. We're gonna do the same thing. Hey, just state your name and address for the record. And we'll store you in those. Okay? First thing we have to do is our roll form?
No.
Um, member Alfonso?
Here.
Member Bransky?
Here.
Member Cap?
Here.
Uh, member O'Brien?
Here.
Member Johnson?
Here.
Member Castaneda?
Here.
Chair Sirzaga?
Here.
Alright. Everyone's here?
And we have to approve our minutes from our last meeting. Anybody have any? Anything they would like to change?
I just had one quick typo. My name is listed twice in the attendees.
Double the influence. Anybody else?
Yeah, I do.
Inquest, yes.
You're talking about the training?
The what?
Training meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I have to pay a compliment to our director because that is that meeting was the best scheduled training meeting I have ever been to. There was a good positive exchange among all members attending. Everyone participated. The two speakers were excellent. The main speaker, the attorney, provided some very significant information. I'm going to write a memo for the record regarding that. Uh, because there were two significant points that I heard in the meeting with regards to uh minutes and uh with regards to past cases. And uh, in that regard, I have a question for Commissioner Bransky. Seth, at the end of the training meeting, you didn't read a comment regarding past cases. And I wonder in what context you meant that?
In the um active discussion of a current case, I thought that we need to be cautious about bringing up of past cases in the discussion. Because the attorney pointed out that there is no precedence being cases, so it's trending to nice doing that.
We all refer, I mean, I was trying to do the what you were meaning. We all refer particularly like with Solons recently and with Perch. We make a reference to a prior uh case that came up. Is that what you're referring to or something else?
Yeah, no, that's exactly what we're trying to, but we gotta be careful about how we do that. If we do it at all.
The one that the attorney, the speaker David Silverman, uh, mentioned regarding the minutes was that it doesn't matter what is on tape taken for the meeting or notes taken. It is what is approved. And that's significant. And in other words, there could be notes, there could be something that was passed over, meant to be stated, uh, mentioned in a meeting when the minutes were being approved, but if they weren't mentioned, it doesn't matter, it's what is approved. So, I'll, I'll follow up on that. Apart from that, I just wanted to get those two on record. Uh, apart from that, I have no other comments.
Anybody else? It's not?
I understand for that commentary, since they didn't finish the agenda, we tell you I'm reading back, but finish out what they had planned for us. Probably everybody would agree that they blocked that.
Nobody else has any other questions, I'll understand a motion to approve them.
So.
Number O'Brien?
Second.
Second Bransky?
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Dagan?
I'll abstain, I was not here. Right, which case is case number twenty-four thirty-two, site plan review for redevelopment at twenty-one twenty-four West one hundred eighty-third Street? My defense are Andy Kumar. Was this published or was it not necessarily published?
Not necessarily.
Uh, they want to uh redevelop the existing gas station that's been sitting up by the petitioners. Take your name and address for the record, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Andy Kumar, three thousand Belacor, Illinois.
And this testimony you want to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth. I think that's the truth, yeah.
I do.
What you want to do is purchase the was it a former gas station? And convert it into a uh a restaurant.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna let you tell us in your own words what exactly you would like to do over there.
I, is there any way we can put the slide there?
I didn't receive a slide deck for this reason.
Okay, okay, no problem. So technically, we are opening a big rockals. That is a fusion of Italian with American in Freuda. So it's uh all Italian foods, but in a fusion, not a straight Italian, not just a uh straight what you eat in Italian foods. So it's a little new concept, very hit in the Freuda market and got a very good uh response. And we tried to get it in the Chicago market to see how good it is. But uh overall, our response in Freuda market is wonderful. We are getting tremendous response from our foods. So that is again, it's not a straight Italian, it's a fusion of Italian. So it will be a little different than what you get uh normal pasta and all. They're not exactly what you're used to. So it's a little twist in it, it's Italian, but it's a little twist in it. Uh, we are gonna have a patio for uh almost four hundred fifty square foot for using it outside. Lot of people now after COVID, it's it's very common that people love to enjoy the outside rather than being in the four walls. And Chicago, we did our research. We only, not when I use the patio, only three months. We thought like people don't like in April and May, sitting outside, that's not true. All the patios which is used in Chicago land area, I'm talking the greater Chicago area, uh, almost everyone is using in April, May, and November. So that's how the things are changing now. So people love to be outside rather than just being inside.
Hmm.
So we are gonna have a patio for the fifty square foot and it's gonna be a four feet height cover, so you can see the table, but you can see the people who are sitting there.
Did you bring any of your plans that we can see or not?
We do have the, I thought like it's already there in the city, that's why I didn't.
So we prepare presentations for the Appearance Commission, we do not for the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I can pull up the Appearance Commission slides since I have all the diagrams for this case as well. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
The diagrams? Packet for the planning zoning?
They are, I can pull that up as well, whichever. Yeah, the Appearance Commission one just had the uh renderings in it, so I don't know if you wanted the rendering?
Yeah, rendering is fine.
Okay.
I thought like this business would have.
Yeah. Are they perfect? Then we'll just load the packet, we have a bit easier. There we go. Almost there. So you can kind of see a little bit better, I'll try to turn off one of the sets of lights here, so it's more visible. There you are?
Yep.
So you're going to use the existing structure?
Correct, everything will be gone, only the four walls we're gonna use.
Hmm.
So we are not gonna, because it's taking a project cost way too high. So we decided not to knock down the whole building, leave the walls as it is and completely gut it.
Okay.
And if you see this car, right behind of the car is, that is the that is the patio you're seeing here. That area is the patio. So we have a very tight area to work with, but we did a pretty good, our architect did a pretty good job keeping all the codes uh of the village intact and try to accommodate the maximum we can. Only issues we are seeing is we have only twelve parking space. So that is a little tight. But uh we are hoping, the next door is us too, the gas station next to it, at the cell. Uh, we operate that, we bought it in two thousand and twenty-one and we converted in twenty twenty-three, no, twenty twenty-two. And twenty twenty-three, we are operating that room. So you have seen the cell gas station right next to this building is us too.
No.
So we are gonna use, we have a parking which is used by the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday by Larsons, the yes, they're, they're using for, but when we start, we can give it to them because we'll use for us. It will be right next to us. So that is gonna help us to get at least eight car park, parking area in that gas station. So we'll be work with eighteen to twenty cars at time.
Hmm.
Now, we do have a back alley. Uh, we just uh purchased the house backside of this property. So we will have some parking in that too. So then, we had no choice, but we had to work with what is space we have. We was trying to find what is the best possible ways to get some parkings that have a good uh four cars, like our employees can park inside in the garage and outside it's four cars and these are. This is, you want to see the layout, say engineering layout, so I don't know how details you this is all engineering layouts. How this all plumbing, electric, everything is how it's gonna go. And this is a, this is the package with a one exit for the emergency, like people can come out straight from the, or they can use from inside. We prefer people to use from inside because then it is more better because Illinois law says that if you have open contract, cannot go out. So that's why we might get this only for emergency purpose, not for regular use.
Okay. I'd get that. Member Castanega, would you like to share with any questions?
I don't have any questions, no, though one thing, when I was reviewing it initially, I was looking at the uh the landscaping plan, I'm glad to see that you spoke with the arborist and they weighed in and you're uh gonna be incorporating some native planting, so that's good, but no, otherwise, um, it's great to hear that you um have definitely been really thoughtful about all the parking and it'll be nice to get other food options and indeed, yes.
So for the arbor, like we really did like hundred and thirty percent than what other villages asked us to do. And I said, oh, do we need that? And they said, yes. I said, okay. So we have gone according to the state uh history of land, whether it's the trees, we are going hundred thirty percent
hmm.
than the what its state requirements are. But it's good, I want, this is my village, I'm already in the second business. We already have a laundromat here. So this is not the, just a one business in village. We have couple of businesses and we are trying to put more and more, so as long as the residents are happy with our work, it's the main thing. And I got a good review, last time we had Appearance Committee meeting, every member said they love the gas station. They said it's one of the nicest, cleanest, and I wa- I was glad that I got a good reviews.
Shell station.
Yes, it's good, right? See? Yes.
Anyway, no, that was, I don't, I don't really have any other questions besides.
Member Johnson?
Uh, just a couple. Uh, maybe you can address the, the outdoor grease interceptor that's, I think that's supposed to be a part of the revised site.
Yeah, so
True.
Normally in uh anything which is less than three thousand five hundred square foot, you don't need a outside grease interceptor, but village wants us to do that. And that is an additional cost which is, I'd say huge, it's not a small, but we accepted that, we are gonna put the outside. Uh, but technically, uh, when the area is less than three thousand, you can go along with this, the inside one. What happens in inside one is, is a third party who comes and clean it and take, put the whole uh, the other one back. But in the outside one, it get cleaned every three or six months, depending on the use, it's a big one, so sometimes it takes even a year to get that thing cleaned up. But that's the village requirement is, I said, no, no objections, we will go what village wants to do. But for this kind of operations, inside one is good enough, that's what we do. We have a food establishment in almost sixteen different places in the inner Chicago area. But as village said, put it outside, we said, okay. It's already incorporated in our outline.
Okay, and the one question I have is, can you talk a little bit about the curves that are going on?
Okay, so there is a request which was made in the Appearance Committee, but that is not what something we have like right now, sub to anything. Right now, if you see this area is the from the Illinois EPA, this area is barred, like we cannot use this area for any kind of flora, fauna, or anything, because it's uh they're still thinking that underground stories or contamination can create a problem in this area. So apart from this area, technically I had trees here too, but now it is gone because we have to take this out, it cannot be any tree or anything, except the pole, light poles, we cannot use anything. So everything needs to be under, when star or concrete needs to be on top. This is your one end, this is your another end. So you can come from this road, I think it's hardwood. No, what's the? One hundred and thirty, yes. And this road, we can, we can enter from either of that side. These are the two in and out uh we have. So technically, right now, there is one here too, but we cannot use this, as I said, uh, there is regulations for this area. So one, people can come from Morris, this is Morris, right? This Morris or one eighty-third. We have entrance from one eighty-third, exit in one eighty-third, entrance in uh Morris and exit in Morris.
Okay, thank you. Nothing?
No.
Member O'Brien?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, I have a question, just one. Page sixteen, uh, item number two, the grease interceptor. The sentence in our material is uh incomplete, I wonder if staff could help. An alternative option is a smaller gravity. Blank, blank, blank.
I noticed that too.
It's a site planner, you know. Under the discussion on page sixteen. Item number two.
I can explain if you want me to.
Um, you're talking about an alternative option is a smaller gravity, dot, dot, dot. Um, to my knowledge, that's a note that I've seen in other site planner view notes, it's possible that's a standard note that just is um, something that we put in our site planner view notes, um, that was just stated by the, the village engineer there, but uh it would have to be um some technical details about what type of interceptor could be installed at the uh uh, on the site.
Okay, so technically what it means is there is two different kind of receptors. One is called thousand liters gallon, that is a two levels, one is a singular list, follow. The day, it's up to them, like as I said, it can be used internal, but they want external. So it's up to them what they want to do, like they want to go for a single level, double level. But as far as the output of the kitchen of that size, you, you don't, we don't need it, but we are doing it as the code, village code needs it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no.
Okay, member Cap?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So you've uh satisfied our village engineer Max Messi?
Yes, we do, we have, we had some uh problems in the beginning, but he understand, our architect did a good job and he went through the, all the codes. Technically, he gave a lot of codes information to them. This is what the changes have done. So we did accommodated everything, there are something which are overburdened, like which is not needed, but still we are accommodating it. Uh, and there are few things in that one, but finally we agreed with everything, whatever they asked us to do. And Messi was great, he understand like this is a very small area to have a, a stormwater detention and all. It is not that big of a land, so we worked out for a stormwater to just use it externally with, it's called a hose pipes in, it's a little uh five or six inches pipe which is gonna run and take the, all the rainwater straight outside rather than be, uh, getting in the lab.
I don't understand that, so you, um, that seems to conflict with what I'm reading here
Yeah.
from the staff report, so could you clarify that, please?
So what I understand with our last meeting with the city, uh, village engineer and the board uh, that they, they said the stormwater study needs to be done by our civil engineer. So that's what we are getting done right now, currently that is what it is gonna done. And finally, if everything is good, the, the water coming out on this whole property is X number, they're gonna use this method. Or if it's not, then they will decide whether they will want some completely stormwater detention or they want to uh get away with that.
Well, here, just to uh kind of cut through the ambiguity here.
Yes.
Uh, the way it's described to me in this is that you have to uh, provide an oversized storm um sewer pipe?
Yes.
ADS plastic?
Correct.
In your parking lot?
Correct.
Uh, could you describe to me how your parking lot drains?
So that's, we are still waiting for our civil engineer to give that, that thing, so we don't have a till the time our last meeting was done, we was not sure whether we have to go and do that things. So finally, we
Well, it's what we've been requiring, just to tell you, so.
Yeah. Yes, we are doing it, so our civil engineering is already still in, in the pending on that.
My next question is, you, 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 you're Mr. Kumar, of course. You, you asked if you could use that curb inlet, so this is another question that I have. You want to connect your new oversized storm sewer pipe?
Hmm.
That's gonna drain your parking lot to this curb inlet, which is at the southeast corner of the property?
Uh-huh.
So could you explain to me how you're gonna cross your dead zone?
That, that's what I'm saying, I'm waiting for my civil engineer to give that information, how much water we are expecting and what is the volume of gonna be, so according to that.
Well, I, I understand that, but the question is, how are you gonna make the physical connection? How are you, are you gonna go long way around to get to that inlet or?
I think what he was explaining that day is it's gonna go this, this way, that's what I was understanding. This is where it was supposed to come out of.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that cursor move.
Okay, okay, this is on the side, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I was.
So one, that's probably my.
But it is, don't hold me for that because he's still doing the study and it is a little longer study they have to do, because they have to calculate the whole water.
So are you gonna be resurfacing your whole parking lot?
That is what, if we have to do that way, we have to do that completely. I mean, it's, it's a cost, but that is no other choice. Because if you have to go through the inside, we have to go six inches deep in, so I
So you're sure there's a curb inlet on your?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure, that's why I don't want to be with.
Just to summarize?
Yeah.
To put words in your mouth and just then follow what Max?
Yes, 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 we are doing that. So our, our civil engineer is in, in contact with him and we, they both are working on it. What is the best way, economical and best way to do that?
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions or comments at this time.
And Bransky?
Uh, I have no comments, I think they have done a good job presenting all the information, gave us the current plans. Which is easy to uh take a look, see what was going on. I'm just glad to see the structure being reused. Um, interestingly enough, in the late eighties, early nineties, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I built that building. I was looking for a barricader down south in Kinkke, we uh provided the structural steel for it, so still standing. So go for it.
Yeah.
So I
And I don't have any, uh, any other questions, I'm, I am happy to see it being redeveloped. And uh, that corner is, it's a, it's you know, people's go by it every day. And they've seen this uh, this that station avenue. And it's so nicely happened, come in and repurpose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you. How many people will you be able to seat inside the restaurant?
At, at, at the capacity is, I think it's a sixty-five uh, at full, including the bar. And outside is forty, so hundred and five at any given time.
But the inside would be sixty-five, you said?
That is what the capacity is, but I don't like to go full capacity, because then the sounds started echoing and all that. So normally we see between thirty-five to forty is a good full pack, we consider it.
Okay, and what are your hours of operation going to be?
Right now, we have not decided, but we are hoping eleven to two and the, uh, sorry, in weekends, eleven to two, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Weekdays, it will be eleven to twelve, that's what we are hoping right now. But again, it will be depending upon how the village is and how village people wants to. If they want us to be a little late, then we have no other choice than open till late, late.
Okay, tell me those hours again.
It's eleven to, uh, eleven to twelve for the weekdays and eleven to two for the weekend.
Okay, so eleven AM till twelve PM?
Yes, twelve PM.
Want to open one hour a day?
No, 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 no.
Twelve AM?
Twelve AM, sorry, yeah. Eleven AM to twelve AM, so.
And on weekends, it would be?
Two, eleven to two. Eleven AM to twelve, two AM.
The two AM?
Including Sundays?
No, no, Sundays is the one where it will be ten or ten, less than ten. Sunday will be like, we need a one day to, for our staff to yeah.
So you will not be open on Sundays?
No, we will, but it will sort of period of time. It will be open, open late, close early.
Okay. You said about forty people will be able to sit outside?
That what we pray for. The capacity is sixty-five, but we want to get on forty, forty-five max.
Okay.
That's why the parking is a little challenge for us. Because if we have a full house, then where we have no park?
Okay.
Technically, we had a, initial, we was thinking of twenty-two parking, but because of all the new changes village wants us to do, it reduced that drastically, the parking space. We lost almost ten parking.
Okay. Uh, it seemed, uh, Max Messi suggested that you put grass in the areas of parkway along Morris Avenue that is currently paved.
Yeah, so that was one of his uh suggestions for the last meeting we had. But the, there is a pros and cons of that thing doing. And our architect is, is sending him the information, what is good and what is not. That is an additional thing which needs to take the whole concrete out and put a soil and all that. So it's additional cost and then the maintenance of that too. Because it is, it will be something which is not our land, so we are going in the city land to do something. So legal issue, there will be few things which is hindering between each other. So he's thinking on it, what he suggested, but he said, it's, it's up to us how we can do it. So we did uh run this thing to our attorney and they said legally, you cannot go to the village's land because that belongs to the village, it is not you. And if you're doing anything, there will be a lot of things we will need from the village to give approval and all that thing. So we don't know how that thing is gonna go, but that was suggestion. That was not incorporated in our plan yet.
Okay. If you could suggest the move of Mr. Manson? If you could suggest the new Mr. Manson. I would try and avoid putting grass in there. You're just gonna have one little strip of grass.
Correct.
And instead of doing that, maybe put some plantings and some mulch.
You you can do that because I think that is part of the.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, yes. So you, that's what I'm saying, there's two conflicting there. Even grass, you cannot use it. Because that is a from the uh Illinois AP. So I I don't think so that thing we will be able to work on because we cannot violate the Illinois EPA's regulations. And then it will come on us. If we do anything which goes, then everything fall on us. And then the insurance will be a big, it's a completely.
Okay.
I.
So did you?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Your question, Member Johnson, about the grease interceptor, the language, it's supposed to say.
Um it should say thousand gallon gravity or hydro mechanical equivalent. That's the language.
That um there's two separate kinds of grease traps and there's a new hydro mechanical equipment that is smaller. More costly to put in, but.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I explained.
It's indoor.
Yes, that's, that's.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Okay, one more question. Assuming you get approval for this, when would you start work on the?
My uh my original plan was June of twenty twenty-four. But village took a long, so now I cannot even start because you see it's no started. Uh we even for doing a breakdown internally, you need a weather around sixty, around fifty-five and sixty. Because this is very old and there's more than other things which is not good for the people, those who want to work.
Right.
So we will technically not before March or April twenty twenty-five. We cannot do nothing right.
Right, okay.
So and anyway, it's gonna take at least a month and more just to get to the final, to the build-out plan and all that. So by the time it will be January sometime, so I think end of March of April is what we are trying to do. Start breaking, doing the all the demolitions and all. Once we'll start, pretty much four, four and a half months will complete. Because we go parallel. We don't wait for one thing to complete. Like patio will start working while they are doing inside job.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
I got one more question. Okay, Mr. Chairman. Brad.
Not one.
I have one more question.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. Uh you got in the southwest corner, six uh spot for six video game machines? Uh we talking Pac-Man or we talking video gambling?
I think it's a Illinois State Video Gaming Board machine.
Okay, so um the question is to staff, then do we need to do special use permit because of that?
Uh we allow. With different licenses, if for a restaurant, we do allow it.
Okay.
It's it's a special license.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes, sir. You just stand and state your name and address, please.
My name is. There's not a name. My name is Ralph. The question is that. You must explain, I've never seen a lot of cycle archivists. I I can. Correct, you have the right answer. So if you see our patio, I will explain you right there. Yes, let me. See, there is my, yes. I'll. I will show you that's I know. The thing is nowadays, lot of Gen Gs, they loves biking. You're seeing this space, this is a patio, this is a uh. Gathered uh closer area. This whole area, we can put it as a parking area for bike. Right now, it's a tree, but I have to take a permission to take this plant out and let it be a parking area. Yeah, bicycle plant. So I have, I've already uh incorporated that, but village wants a plant there, so there is a plant right now. But I know this is a brand of the one. Yeah. No, no, that is that right there is the idea. That's why I showed you. So it is right next to. So we accommodated it because we are in the uh city of Chicago also, so we already have three to four parking.
Right.
Yes, we have, we have a cycle up, like it's a of iron, a semi-circle, you put your first wheel and it goes like this. It's not like this, the cycle will like this. But we have the space, we means we had that area for that, but because we didn't get any. But if you want, we can. Uh?
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yes, then I need to, you're seeing the curve, that's what I was explaining that day to Messi. Now this curve will go, then there will be a space here so that I don't want anybody to cross the curve to go there. So the curve will have to come out of there. So if I want you guys to send the email to architect, then he will, he will, he will change it, he will change it. So this is the area we can use for bike parking, not bike, when bicycle parking. So this curve will come out here, it will reduce, and then they can go straight and. I'll get that. But maximum will be four, not more than that. We don't have any of a space to put more than four at any given.
Better than that.
Uh? Yeah, better than nothing, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments? Are we ready to make the motion?
Your chairman, I'll make a motion to approve case twenty-four thirty-two site plan review. For twenty-one twenty-four, West one hundred and eighty-third Street, as proposed on the drawings submitted by J. Scott McKay, architect. Projective funding conditions. One, the location, the outdoor grease interceptor to accommodate the proposed restaurant must be identified in the by-site drawings submitted village staff before the issuance of any building permit. Number two, post improvements within public right of way with the removal of the curb cut on Morris Avenue. Including Parkway improvements must be identified in the same by-site drawings. And number three, a photometric plan showing the location of lighting fixtures, photometric values, and any proposed lighting product details shall be submitted prior to the issuance of any building permits.
Here we have a notion by Bransky.
We have.
Okay.
Well, before we do that, I would like to add, just to emphasize that uh compliance with Max. The village engineers' recommendations with regard to site improvements.
Okay. We go along with that, Mr. Bransky?
Yes, sir. This is gonna be that drainage issue, good point. One second.
You'll second that, also Brian, okay? Roll call, please.
All right. Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzaga?
Yes.
All right.
Very good. All right, thank you, Brian. Thank you. Good luck to you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then actually, we have a text amendment, uh case twenty-four forty-six. Text amendment for childcare centers in B two downtown transition. Legal notice was published for this on November sixth edition. With the south. Did we receive any comments?
Not on the text amendment, no.
No, okay. Do you want to present this or?
Sure, I can. Yeah. I'm happy to provide a brief description of the proposed tax amendment. All right. Uh good evening, commission. Uh just to provide a very quick bit of context for uh this text amendment. And I'm actually just um scroll to the packet item, just in case for reference. All right. So this text amendment is to permit the uh operation of a uh of childcares, uh childcare centers, specifically. Of childcare centers that are not home daycares, but are, you know, would be considered commercial childcare centers. Um in the uh B two downtown transition zoning district uh with a number of conditions. So the twenty twenty-three uh zoning ordinance update allowed for our, took changed the way that we treat uh childcare centers. We originally allowed them as a um special use in other districts, including our residential zones. And um we had a number of other childcrees operating in those zones. Um in the twenty twenty-three update, we removed them and only permitted them in the B three um general business um zoning district. Um as a special use. So looking at the um, yeah, as we've started to receive as staff more requests. For uh operating a childcare center, and we've taken a look at some other communities and how they handle childcare centers. Um and just evaluated the village's needs for, you know, this type of amenity, uh we've proposed the tax amendment that's before you. So again, just to walk you briefly through that, um it is to allow it in the downtown transition zoning district, provided it meets a number of conditions. And those conditions, I'll quick scroll to on the screen here. Um the conditions would be that A, that childcare centers could be only located in buildings that have a single principal use. We'd like for those uh businesses, uh based on staff recommendation, to operate in kind of its own place. It has a lot of specialized needs for safety, for um, you know, building security, things like that. Um that plays into that uh condition. The structures used for a childcare center shall be located in freestanding buildings. That goes hand in hand with that first condition I mentioned. Um and you'll see them grouped together in your staff memo. And then the third one, that a childcare center shall be in a minimum of three thousand square feet, uh three thousand square foot space. Um this is based on a couple of different factors, um ensuring that again, the spaces are large enough or adequate to support the use. Um on the um looking ahead to probably looking at some of the other cases on the agenda. Some of the uh other buildings that were originally residentially zoned that had childcare centers are that size. And so we want to, our condition to reflect that, and then it also reflects the average childcare center that you see being proposed for operation. Based on uh the State Department of of Health and and Child Services. Um you know, what you're seeing for the average proposal coming through for licensing for them. So um kind of a threefold set of conditions for that text amendment. Um and um again, uh the following cases, the map amendment and special use related to childcare center, uh we'll discuss separately. So um thank you for your time and uh the opportunity to introduce it to you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um. So the childcare centers that we have right now that are in buildings that are not. Single use. So right start downtown, they, the, or over at Dixie, but that's a, that's a, we agree, I think. Who they just we ran probably in or?
So we tried to um write this so that. B, so B three is the only other district currently where childcare centers are permitted, and they do not have, these conditions are only for the B two district.
Hmm.
So they don't have to be in a single use building.
So then what is the?
The reason.
What makes it important for the B two district, what's in the B three?
Because the B two district is a portion of B two is downtown, and we don't want to see our storefronts that we want for retail used for. Um childcare centers, whereas in um in the B three district, we have more strip centers. That are less um downtown oriented, you know, the historic downtown, so that was the reason. No.
Okay.
And it's also space, but no, it's not. It's not about, it's not at all about that. It's about the character of the downtown district.
Okay, so that's why it was omitted in the city version?
Yes.
Okay. There's no question.
Um.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Along these lines, and this is for clarification. I don't mean to muddy the waters here by any stretch of the imagination, but. Um I'm making uh generalities, you know, to start with. So B three would be, for instance, uh Kedzie and one hundred eighty-third. Um the Cherry Creek on one hundred eighty-third and the Governor's, right? And. And then one hundred eighty-seventh and Halsted, if I'm not mistaken, and if I'm reading. Hundred, I'm sorry, let's start over again. So Kedzie, west of, west, one hundred eighty-third street, Kedzie is west. Uh long there. Um B three, I think, is one hundred eighty-seventh and Halsted, right?
So, yeah, so if you can see, B three is Southgate.
Southgate, yeah.
Um Cherry Creek.
Cherry Creek. And uh where the uh rehab center is.
Yes, and then this is, this is B three, this, this is B three.
Okay, now, um, okay, so that clarifies that. However, um uh don't we have some other daycare centers, for instance, um? In the, what would be the B four district along Halsted North Ridge, isn't there that?
We do have one.
So what is that, a non-conforming use? Is that it? Is that how it's considered?
Yes.
Okay, and then um Salem Lutheran, I think, still operates um.
So sure, so religious uses are exempt from um these because it is ancillary to their use and considered a accessory use.
Then uh Park District at one time in the Irwin Center had something, um this, I don't know if they still do.
I I don't think they have an actual daycare center. They probably have children's program.
Yeah. All right. Clarifies everything, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
The ones that are in the B two district, the bright start, over on now, Ridge Road.
Yes. Right, I had them.
Even though they're in a building that's not stand-alone.
They they are okay unless they are closed for a period of more than a year.
Anybody else?
I just have two.
Yes, sir.
Uh one is the date on page forty-four. Which also is on page forty-eight, which is the uh findings of fact. The date is the tenth of January in twenty twenty-three, not the eleventh.
Where is that, babe?
On page forty-four, in the middle of the blue bar.
That is not page forty-four in my packet, but.
Let's see. That's only in this case. Page forty-four.
I see where you're saying page twenty-one. In my packet, it's twenty-one, so it's not January eleven, you said? What's the date? The tenth, okay.
The zone book.
So it's a tenth, okay.
And the date carries over to the findings of fact.
Okay. Okay, back.
The only other question I have is, the both the text amendment and the map amendment refer to. This particular piece of property, correct? No others?
Yes. No, the text amendment is referred, the text amendment is the entire B two district.
Okay.
And that's the entire zoning code, but the map amendment and the special use are specific to the properties.
Right. Then I need to have you advise me that on page seventy-one, it says the proposed map amendment to zone the subject property. In the B two district could create opportunities for future redevelopment, which would not be permitted under the current R two. And over under page forty-seven, it says some properties may be brought back into conformity with the village zoning ordinance. I don't know how those two comments relate to isolated change that we're making. It's one change, one piece of property.
You're right. Yeah.
With regards to the map.
The map.
Maybe it's not.
I'm sorry, with regards to the map. Oh, both the map and the and the uh.
Special use.
Text amendment.
The text amendment is not for one property. The text amendment is for the entire B two. The map amendment is for a single property.
Those are the only questions I have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so you want approval on the text amendment?
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else have any other questions or comments on it? If not, I will entertain a motion. To approve the text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend, I uh would recommend approval of case twenty-four. Mister Chairman, I would recommend, I uh would recommend approval of case twenty four. Dash forty six amendment to the text of our zoning ordinance. Uh to amend table forty four dash oh three dash oh four of the village zoning ordinance. To add childcare centers as a special use within the B two downtown transition zoning district. And amend section forty four dash oh four dash oh six. Childcare center of the Homewood zoning ordinance to have the following standards for childcare centers. First is operation in the B two downtown transition district is limited to properties with a single principal use. Second, standard is operation in the B two downtown transition district. Is limited to a freestanding building. And the third is uh structure is used for a childcare center. Shall be a minimum of three thousand square feet in gross floor area. And we would incorporate the findings of fact hereby into the record.
As amended, as amended. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by member Cap. Seconds by member O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzaga?
Yes. You said you wanted to make some comments?
No, that was, I had my questions. Thank you.
All right, so next is case number. Twenty four forty seven, a map amendment, special use permit for childcare center at one eighty three forty one Dixie. And you are the applicant, I presume?
I am.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Well, Nada Robinson, um two one three three one Georgetown Row, Frankford, Illinois, six oh four two three.
All right, can you raise your right hand and swear the testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I hope you can.
Yes.
So tell us what you wanna do over there.
So I am proposing um to operate a math amendment and special use license to operate a that. A licensed daycare center at one eighty three forty one Dixie Highway um with so maximum capacity of fifty children. Um the building interior and exterior um is currently set up as a daycare center. Um although it's been vacant um for a few years, um the Gendales who are the owners have maintained the property. Um and there are just minor updates needed um for improvements, just to um make it more lively and welcoming for families. Um I have done research in the area. Um are there are five daycares in Homewood area. Um although they are bigger than the center I am proposing to open, um there is a need in the community for childcare. There are more working families um entering the workforce, there's single parent families. Um that need childcare and D C F S puts a cap on licensed capacity. Um and so the uh daycares that are currently operating have waiting lists, leaving families without childcare. Um for me, I think the advantage is because I am trying to open a small licensed center. Most parents value small intimate settings for their children, especially post COVID, right? Um and we're entering a point of season of illnesses and just different viruses that young little people gave. Um but uh for me, I've been a licensed family childcare provider um for the last ten years. I actually have my roots in Homewood. Um I started my, my daughter is ten. Um so I have my masters in public administration that that's where my background is in. Um and so I've always had um a sense of community. And I just decided to mix my passion for children to serve with that sense of community. To help families and moms like myself have reliable, affordable and quality childcare.
Okay. So are you going to buy or rent the existing building?
So the plan is to get immediate occupancy, is to be attended and leased from them. Um and in the short time of year to purchase the building.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions for Ms. Robinson?
I have a couple, um the entrance to the building, it shows that it's at the front, but the parking is in the back. So would people, would the children and parents be coming in the back of the building?
Yeah, so the current setup, the parking lot is in the rear of the building. And then there's um security gates to actually enter. Um there's actually two security gates, which. Just in case a child cha- uh tries to escape, they they're not able to get out quickly into the parking lot. So it's better that the entrance be in the rear.
Yeah, that's great. Um perfect spot for it. And it, you know, it's set up for childcare center. Obviously, there's lots of children at home, which would need, who need uh good um supervision. Now, um do you have, I mean, you 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 have your masters in administration. Do you, did you have any early childhood education?
Yes, so as a licensed um family childcare provider, I have to be teacher qualified. So every year I have the annual training school D C F S. Um but I also went back to school um on scholarship. Once I decided that this is my tenure, this is my gift to myself. So I knew last year to go back to school. To become the director qualified to operate the center, to be hands on and be present every day.
Wow, that's great. As a side note, my mother did the same thing. She, when when we went to high school, she went back to to school. She got her uh degree in early childhood education and ran a very successful, large um childcare center in Hammond for thirty years. And so I appreciate what you're doing and uh and I hope that uh this will be successful.
Anybody else on the board have any questions or comments?
I'll just echo what member Alfonso said, you know, definitely for more childcare options in the village, you know. So then we'll point it out that our zoning is significantly more restrictive than others around there. So I think we are expanding this to allow this special use that uh helps meet the needs of the community, which is what, you know, we're all about here. And as we saw that you're gonna be open really early and really late, which is useful for parents who might have longer commute, six A M and then seventeen and pick up is.
Well, it's just commute on the metro. And I know parents are rushing, you know, to get their kids from daycare. Um and there's not a lot of centers that do have that extended time available beneath those.
So I think it expanding this, you know, makes it, makes us more friendly to childcare businesses. I think that's, that's great. That's all.
Member Johnson, anything?
Uh I, it seems to have been the problem for the last forty years, even with my kids, thirty years, I should say. Uh but I think it's great and I wish you much success.
Thank you.
Um you're, just quickly with the parking, you're um can sort of talk about that, that you've got sixteen spaces.
Yes, there there's sixteen spaces in the parking lot. However, um the way that I've always learned my family childcare, because I'm at home, right? So I'm in the community um with my neighbors and I have to be mindful of them. Um so my contracts are um. These, I I contract between the parents for their work schedule. So uh it's not just a seven A M to seven P M pickup and drop off where you'll have peak times um. And con- traffic congestion. Um so pickups and drop offs, drop offs are staggered. Um so the peak times will be uh probably between seven thirty and eight thirty, like a rush. But there's different children at different times, if that makes sense, um so there to alleviate that traffic congestion.
Oh, good luck. I think this is much needed.
Member O'Brien, anything?
Evening.
Good evening.
I uh appreciate your consideration of uh Homewood and this property to activate a a vacant piece of property. It's uh it's welcome. Uh I think I only have two things. One is on page seventy three. Again, there's an incomplete and I just wondered what the completion might be. Item number ten, the site also has direct connections to public sidewalks on the, and it stops. Number ten.
Yep, the site also has direct connections to public sidewalks. Um it should say on the east side of the building. Along Dixie Highway.
Okay. East side of building.
I'm looking the west side of the building?
Yeah.
Or the west, I'm sorry.
You just did that to see if we'd catch it, I know. Second question is on the uh recommended action. Uh item number two, the one eighty eight uh parking space, is that included in the sixteen, item number one?
Yes, um it it would have to be. Um when she, when.
Just clarify.
Yep, correct.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Okay, member Cap? Are things good?
Thank you.
Okay, member Bransky?
Uh no questions. Once again, thank you staff for including complete information and well organized.
No questions. Member Alfonso?
One, I guess all my buttons.
Okay. Um what are your hours about the eighteen room?
Um I have not. I have not finalized the set hours, but I would like to be, um it that depends on staffing. Um but I would like to be open from seven A M to seven P M.
What about weekends?
No weekend care at this time.
No Saturday or Sunday. And how many, how many kids would you have at that one time?
Um at one time, so the capacity is fifty. Um that also depends on the need of the community. But there are four rooms. Um there then infant room with a one to four ratio. Um a two year old room with a one to eight ratio, um a mixed age room for three through five. Um with a one to ten ratio and then after school, after school room. And that one has a one to two. So, um I'll be reserved in generous, at the same maybe forty. Forty, I'll be pretty capable of being.
And how many employees who are you planning on having?
Initially, uh four and including myself as director and awful teacher in the school age room. Uh with a max of eight. So an assistant in every, in each room once I reach for that to me.
Okay. So anywhere from four to eight?
Yes.
It's nice to see that building. Put back in use again. Anybody in the audience have any questions about this case? No, okay. Anybody else on the board have any other comments? None. None, all right, we'll then entertain a motion for case twenty four thirty seven.
Um, Chairman, I recommend approval case twenty four dash forty seven. Do you want to have a question, staff? Do you want to vote on each case number separately or do they do this in one vote?
We can do it separately because there's actually separate ordinance.
Right. So first off, recommend approval case twenty four dash forty seven, a math amendment for property at one eighty three forty one Dixie Highway. From the R two single family residence only district to B two downtown transition zoning district.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bransky, second by Cap.
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzaga?
Yes.
Hey, riding on the coattails of that, recommend approval case twenty four dash forty eight. To allow childcare center as a special use permit at one eighty three forty one Dixie Highway, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant must provide a revised site drawing, restriping the parking lot for sixteen parking spaces in the rear. Prior to the issuance of a business license or any building permit associated with proposed use. Number two, the applicant must provide one ADA accessible handicap space on the site. Prior to issuance of business license or any building permit associated within the proposed use. And incorporate the findings of fact into the record, which there are nine so stated.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by member Bransky, a second by member O'Brien. Your call?
Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzaga?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you about the, just the next steps and what that will look like. I know we've talked about that topic, but we'll go back over it then, uh either tomorrow or over the next week.
Okay, next is case number twenty four fifty three, a variance for a driveway at one eighty one forty eight Perth Avenue. Requested by Ruth Fullwelly?
Yes. Thanks, my name is Ruth Fullwelly. Address is one eighty one forty eight Perth Avenue, Homewood, Illinois, six oh four three zero.
And you swear the testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay, go ahead, tell us what you wanna do.
Uh currently, we just had a fence um to enclose the rear of our home, the back, our backyard. Um there's uh an opening where we would like to um have a gate, like a swing gate. Um put up to enclose the fence and also the backyard. But in order to do so, the the fence, um the doors for the fence will be on like these roller wheels. So we need asphalt to be placed, to be put down. And the asphalt will extend from Stewart Street, which is the back of the the property. Um it would extend from Stewart Street, maybe fourteen feet into the the yard from the fence. So just enough for us to be able to open the gates inward.
Okay, it's a very nice looking fence, darling.
Thank you.
So what are you planning on parking there?
Well, currently, um we don't have, so the the front of the home is on Perth Avenue, the back of the home is on Stewart Avenue.
Right.
Before, when we purchased the home, there the the back of the the house, the the backyard was not enclosed. So currently, we just was able to put a fence up. Um but um in order for us to have access to the rear of the property, it would, you know, be nice to have the gate. So, you know, when we do landscaping or anything, we have entrance to the back of the yard. Cause currently, um you know, of course, we have our driveway off of Perth Avenue for the front of the home. Um and then we just have the, like a sidewalk along the side of the home to get to the backyard. So we're just asking for a gate um to go, uh doors to the fence, um so we, to be able to enter the rear of the home.
Okay, and you're gonna put down asphalt?
Asphalt.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
I need to clarify something. Uh you mentioned fourteen feet?
Yeah, yeah, it, well, is it?
It would extend from Stewart into your backyard property by fourteen feet.
Twenty four feet from Stewart to the actual gate. And then from the gate, um so like for us to be able to open up the 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 door to the fence. It'll be another probably fourteen feet. So a total of maybe what, thirty seven?
There's twenty four feet between the street and where the fence starts.
It tends to be set back from the street.
Right, right.
I'm just trying to clarify, the non-residential zoning review on page thirty five says twenty three feet. I'm just trying to clarify, the non-residential zoning review on page thirty five says twenty three feet. But in the material on page thirty two, it says thirty seven feet. It's what you mentioned.
Right.
So that would be correct. Not what is on the. Non-residential zoning review.
So, looking at the non-residential zoning review, which is completed by the applicant, um, you've mentioned twenty three feet, so that you were mentioning that.
Yeah, sorry, not twenty four feet, I'm sorry, it's twenty three feet from the actual Stewart, uh, the from the street Stewart. To the fence is twenty three feet and then, uh, from the fence inside of the yard, it'd be additional fourteen feet. Just enough for us to be able to open up the gates inward.
Total thirty seven.
Yes.
No other question.
Okay. Which was in the drawing. Anybody else?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm confused, um. These, my questions probably are best answered by. Our dynamic doers, planners, um, this is a. A double frontage lot, but. Um, is not this. Frontage on Stewart, isn't that? Somebody else's front yard?
No, it's all their property.
Well, I understand it's their property, but, uh, aren't there other houses on Stewart that? Front Stewart as their front yard?
Yes, so there are, the, there's three or four properties here, your neighbor, the applicant, and then the neighboring property. I believe there's one more beyond the neighboring prop, the property beyond that, there are three double frontage lots on that street. Um, that all go through, um, and and so, um. But the others along Stewart, the rest of the properties on Stewart all have front yards that face onto Stewart.
So my question becomes, um, to put a fence here, is it? You know. Is it considered a, a fence in a front yard?
You have a setback though, don't you?
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, our, uh, zoning ordinance, does it not? Have standards for, uh, the height of fence along, uh, street frontage. And this is not really. Uh. Any different than if this were a corner lot with a double frontage? If you think about it.
They, well, they already installed, the fence is not part of the request, the fence was previously.
It's a bigger question, that's why my, uh, comments and my questions are directed, um. At you, it's kind of unfair to.
When was the fence installed?
Uh, the fence was installed. August, I believe.
We approved it this year.
It's considered a you, rear yard? Well, since the house is actually located on Perth. And this lot goes all the way through to Stewart. Wouldn't you consider that the back lot?
Yeah.
The backyard?
That would be the backyard, that's it. And we wouldn't have even considered. Properties on Stewart to consider, or, uh, Stewart to be considered front yard. For the fencing, because it is her backyard. So we wouldn't have even flagged it, or it would have just been issued as a, as a rear yard fence.
The address is Perth.
Yes.
Not Stewart, perhaps, where does the backyard? Or at least. Yeah, I think there's one other house to the south of theirs.
Like in sixty.
On the same side of the street that faces upward.
Yes.
But member Cap raised a good question, it is. I mean, you can certainly get a building that to do it, but it is a good question. You do have, right, so. Yeah. But that's not, that's not the applicant's fault.
Since I'm on a roll. Um, theoretically, um, this property could be subdivided, right? With the frontage on Stewart, um. Being. Subdivided from the Perth part of it.
I'm afraid I don't fully understand the question, could you repeat it?
Well, you could have us one lot on. On Perth and the other lot on Stewart. If you split them up, you could build a house on. You already have a house on Perth. You could theoretically build a house then on Stewart. If those lots were split.
Yeah, you would have to subdivide it, it would have to meet the R two zoning standards as its own lot.
All of that effect, what's in front of us tonight?
Of course. Yeah, it's not clear to me, uh, what kind of, you call it a door, I think you mean a gate, um, so is it a? Um. Is it a gate that is a, like a door?
Yeah, we were thinking about.
Is it a gate that is a, um, um, on rollers that? Opens parallel to the rest of the fence.
Originally, we were thinking about opening up parallels to the fence, that would be nice, but currently. There's like, there's no sidewalks on it, well, there's no sidewalks on either side of the property, well, the front or the back. But, uh, we think it would be better just to just do an asphalt where. You're going just for that opening, so we will do a gate. Like two doors opening inward into the property. Which is. And I mean, it makes sense too, because our next door neighbor has the same gate. And it's just, it's easier, cause it's on wheels, it's just open up, like inward.
They have a driveway too, I didn't go out there.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, I took some pictures, but I can get them developed in enough time, but, yeah, they they have a, it's, it's, theirs is nice.
Yeah, the one next door has been in for a couple of years.
Couple of years. For their new zoning ordinance, though.
I can't remember how many years it's been there, okay. Pass it every day.
Just to clarify, I'll be, um. Uh, against something that we have to, we have to consider. Your fence is there already, it's not all of your own, it can stay, but it does say. On three lots, both street lot lines are considered front lot lines without regard to location, the main entrance of the principal building, so. To your point, we do not pay attention to that.
Anybody else have questions?
Nope.
None. Is anybody ready to make a motion, are are you satisfied with that? Okay. All right, I will then entertain a motion for case number. Twenty four dash fifteen, variance for a driveway at one eighty one forty eight Perth Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion, recommend approval case twenty four dash fifty three to allow variance of section. Forty four dash zero five dash zero five. Point D, point one, point eight of the home and zoning ordinance to commit the construction of a second driveway. At one eighty forty eighth Perth Avenue, subject to the following conditions, number one. Approval of construction plans for the driveway by a home building division, which meet all requirements of the home building codes and ordinances.
Yeah, the motion by member Bransky, do we have a second? Second by member O'Brien. Roll call.
Member Alfonso? Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
No.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yeah.
Chair Suzaga?
Yes.
Right?
Okay, thank you.
The next case is case number twenty four forty nine, a special use permit. For indoor commercial place of assembly at one eighty thirty five Dixie. This also was published in the November sixth edition of the South Town. And property owners within two hundred and fifty feet were notified. Did you get any comments from anybody?
Um, for this one, no, I did not receive any public comment.
And is Ms. Jones here? You wanna come up to the podium, please?
Good evening.
Good evening. You state your name and address for the record, please?
Maya Jones, uh, four fifteen Hamon Street, Park four, three one, six zero four fifty six.
And you swear the testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self you got?
Yes.
So what you would like to do is put in a. Indoor commercial place of assembly at one eighty thirty five Dixie. And what is currently in that location now, any?
Nothing is in that, uh, location, it was a popcorn shop.
You're a popcorn shop, okay. All right, so tell us what you would like to put in.
Well, I would like to put in a special event space for celebrations of. Friday showers, baby showers, um, repasses, small birthday parties. Um, things like that.
And the floor area is approximately eleven hundred square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a wall in the back with the, uh, three compartment sink. In that.
Okay. And is there any parking in the back also, or not?
No, it's just parking for me in the back, one parking spot.
Do you wanna break it up into two areas, according to this?
Well, it's already broken up into two areas, I will not be knocking down any walls or anything. The front area, when you walk in, that will be where your tables and chairs will be for the event. And then the back area will be where the food will be served, in the kitchen that area. No food will be, um, cooked in that area, they will be bringing in their own food.
Okay, and it currently has one bathroom?
At times, it has one bathroom.
Will the second bathroom be required? Uh, Angela's?
No, I, I don't believe it will. But we'd have to look at it with the building permit present.
Yeah, the fire department would definitely have to come in and give me my, I can see.
Right.
That will be how.
Okay, and you wanna use this for? Different types of? Parties?
Yes, even. So just like if someone wanted to have a community meeting, they can have it there if they wanted to. Repasses, small repasses for funerals or small dinner parties. For birthday parties, Friday showers, mall weddings.
And where would your parking be?
I will be using publicly, public parking.
Okay, so parking on Dixie Avenue?
Yes.
No, mentioned in here, at some point, you were considering. Using, uh, Saint Joe's parking lot also?
Yes, I'm trying to contact them now to see if they would even rent it to me for my small event.
We say John, yeah.
Yes, that's possible.
Because you're required to have four parking. So if you're gonna have fifty people for high table events. And sixty people for events with seating. That tables and chairs?
Yes, so it will be the opposite, if I, if I was approved that many people, it would be high table sixty. For high table, meaning it's just walk through, they will not be seated, and then mall parties that seated will be fifty. And that would just be, like I said, upon a full draw of the fire department. So, at the last, at the end of the day, the fire department will have to make that petition for.
Right. And, um. What would your hours of operation be?
That I do not know at this point, because parties can run eleven to twelve, most places open to twelve o'clock. I probably would only wanna be open at twelve o'clock, so. Whatever times, um, probably from ten o'clock, because you need to get people enough time to get in to set up. If they want, or if they would, um, have me set up, it depends on what package they would, uh, purchase from me.
So from like ten A M.?
Yes, ten A M.
And this would be seven days a week?
It would be seven days a week, but most likely people don't party during the week like that for, uh, events and. Celebrations of, um, partying, so. I mostly am looking at the, um. Weekends. For my events, but, you know, repasses do happen throughout the week, so I would consider that for that. Or a meeting or creators who have podcasts, if they wanted to do a podcast in my, uh, space, they can do so for that. And usually for podcasts, you know, you would probably have five guests in there for that. Uh, depends on who they're interviewing, or the, uh, podcast.
And what about employees, would you have any employees?
No, it would just be me and my husband.
Okay. Now, this says there's one dedicated parking space. Located in the river building.
Yes.
So that could be used by either you or your husband?
Yes, correct.
My concern is where you're gonna park these other fifty people? If you only have. Street parking.
Well, that's why I said I would be reaching out to the church, uh, to see if I can rent it. And also to be using the public parking, um, I was considering this space for a restaurant. Uh, the landlord, uh. He doesn't want to do the exhaust, because he just did his own roof, and I understand that. I've always, um, wanted an event space as well, so I considered this space for event space, because. The pricing is right, wanted to check other locations in the area and. I couldn't beat the price, so that's why I considered this space for that.
Okay. Well, let me open it up to the board and see if they have any questions or comments.
Chairman have a question that.
Yes, sir.
And it dovetails on your parking discussion. I'm a little confused, findings of fact, item number seven says the subject property has four parking spaces on site. Shared with other businesses adjacent to the proposed business and the one dedicated space.
That's correct.
So, that conflicts a little bit with the testimony so far and further up in materials. Conflicts with the descriptions. On page seventy seven, the current packet.
Cause there are four spaces behind the building, but only one of them is for parties, so.
So it's inaccurate to say that it's a shared arrangement?
Sounds like that's the case. So they're not shared.
So who uses the other three?
Uh, the other three will be the person that's next to me, which is the gym. And, um, I don't know if it goes, I can't remember if it goes to the next building, which is vacant. Um.
It would be the travel, the travel broker. Of the building, and then me and Jim, so we. Dedicated to those three, it all belongs to the same owner, but it sounds like they are assigned spaces.
So do we amend item number seven when we make our motion?
Yes.
I guess I'll just go on. I am concerned about the I, I think the, the business concept you want to put in there is good and certainly would like to see something like that in downtown Homewood. I think it just, it brings people in. Um, but I just, the parking is, is is not conducive to what you want to do. Um, I think it's gonna be a hardship on you as well as the surrounding businesses. I don't know, I, I mean, approaching the church is a really good idea. But for our purposes, without that agreement in your hand, that's not hope, not useful at this moment. And the public parking is even limited. So I'm not sure, it, it's not clear to me how it's gonna work very smoothly for you. I'm not trying to discourage you from doing it because again, I like what you want to put in there. I think it's a good idea. And we could certainly use a, a, a space like that. I just wish we had the parking to support it in that, i- i- in that location. But that's a little bit of a concern, but that, that's my only comments at the moment.
Mr. Chair, may, uh, maybe maybe, uh, proposal might be for you to table this for now, give you a chance to because we all have the same concerns. I'm sure, I'm not speaking, I'm sure I'm speaking for everybody else. Uh, and maybe give you a chance to talk to the folks at Saint John. Because I, you know, we, we've the parking is a big problem.
Yeah, if you can come back with an agreement. And Mr. Johnson, table it for right now, we'll continue with.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll talk to the church and see what, if anything, they'll do.
Okay.
Do you have any contingency plans if the church says no?
Um, I was thinking of the dental office, but I don't know if they're sharing that with somebody. I, that will be my second, um, get, uh, choice to even consider it. Um, and that will be it because there's really, you know, nothing else that I can see that is the parking lot that I could, you know, leave.
I know that your, uh, proposed peak hours on weekends kind of coincide with peak hours at the church. Just to point that out.
Okay, yeah, so if it's during the daytime, yes.
I was going to suggest that maybe you talk to the dental office and see your favorite excuses exist. And they, and other favorites sound for the restaurant, because you have a restaurant, so.
There'd be enough back there for your needs, though? But although if you combine with public, combined with street parking, maybe so.
You know, there's, uh, just to talk a little bit more in generalities, what used to be the old, uh, Vicebury? And I know what, there's an alley in which generally indicates a, a property line and a, uh, uh, different ownership, but um, there's actually a fairly large parking area between those buildings, uh, where Vice used to be, which is what?
Taekwondo.
Taekwondo, and then that, um, you know, whatever it is, I know they have an apartment or two up top and whatever to the north, but there's a, uh, I mean, a tremendously large area that probably could accommodate at least twenty spaces, just.
Does that belong to the property that would be the south end of the church property, though?
No, no, there's, uh, uh, south of the church is a, um, um, offices on the, uh, ground floor and then two or three stories residential going above that. And then there's another light brick colored building that used to have a, um, dentist, as I recall, on the, um, uh, Dixie frontage, but then there were apartments up top of that. I apologize, I don't have the address, but there's a, I mean, really a tremendously large um, ass, sea of asphalt back there that could accommodate at least twenty spaces. So you might be as well, uh, advised to essentially start knocking on, uh, doors, just going. It'd be closer for you as well. And then, uh, I have a question, uh, the applicant or, um, in the findings of fact, uh, item number two, it has one, um, um, description of a property owner and then, um, the following sheet, the property owner is entirely different, different, uh, address, so just to clarify that. Yeah, and then it's, however, it's.
The tax records says the owner is.
Where, where do you see the other space where it's a different owner?
On the non-residential zoning application under property owner?
Yep.
It says Omar Hassan.
Okay, that would be more accurate.
Okay.
That's a Bill O'Brien comment.
Is, is, is that your desire? With us to table it up or no?
Yes, I would love that before you then lie it. My heart has been on this space. I've been looking for over a year. I was looking at. Cause I was gonna put a space there, but it just was too much work for me to do, so. And I've been looking and just looking, and so when I found this space and the lease price, I was like, Lord, on what he said, so. Um, me and my father, we are both, uh, chefs, and so we like perfect spot, but once he said, I just steal my all, you know, rough, and like, okay. But I've been always, uh, researching event spaces, and I know it's small community, and I know that people will love to do something like that.
It's tough when you're business owner, trying to get.
Yes.
So do we need a motion to continue this?
Yes, sir.
In the material on page twenty-one, it says larger events are expected to require a greater number of parking spaces. Are those events different than the seating for fifty at the highest table or sixty people? Would those be larger events?
The larger event will be the high tables, which mean they will not be seating. It will only be a walk through. So just say you're getting your food and you're standing like what I'm doing now and just eating. You will not be able to sit because it's too many people. So that's what most of all the events that I have researched, that's how they do that. If it's too many people, so just say their capacity is sixty. They can't do sixty sitting seating because it's just too tight for around sixty inch table and eight to ten people around the table. So they will have to do the high boy tables without seating.
Okay, the comment I have is on, also on page twenty-one of the cell. It refers to repass events. The word is pass, P A S T, R E P A S T. Both repass and repast with a T are, it's dated terminology by decades. And, uh, things have evolved, uh, over time. This is normally born out of, um, the comfort of, for, of people who have, I mean, after a, a week, a funeral and the food. And that's another another change where we call comfort food. This was a comfort to the people that were there memorializing the person that passed. But the word is R E P A S T.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so who would like to make a motion to continue this? Do we need a specific date or just?
I don't think we could probably say a specific date.
Um. I can start calling tomorrow again and then, um, see if it.
I think we can just continue that.
Yeah, I don't think we need to.
Just continue it.
With that being.
So you have an opportunity to contact some neighbors and see if you can rustle up some parking.
Yes.
Okay.
On the motion, Chair.
All right, so go ahead.
I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, delay or table case number twenty-four forty-nine for special use permit for indoor commercial place assembly at one eight oh three five Dixie Highway, uh, for future date to be determined.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Johnson, do either second, O'Brien? Roll call?
Right, Member Alfonso?
Yes.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member Cap?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Susaga?
Yes. Well, good luck with your search.
Thank you all so much.
Yeah, we'll be in touch to.
This is what I was referring to.
That's for that.
Well, I understand.
Oh, I said, so just be important, having to be in touch with you.
That's the thing.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think that's part of the dentist.
No. I would suspect it would probably be one of these.
Yeah, they have to call Tommy for Paris and ask him.
He would know, absolutely.
Thank you.
But that's why I was, every, every time every time you're gonna cut through here, it's.
Yeah. Brian has a question that we were talking about here, the. I have a question, um, having been on the boards for several years, I've not seen, it'd be curious to me, I've not seen this kind of request activity and, um, progressive change. I'm going back three years and I'm checking on different cases that we've had. And we've had many where there is a meeting space associated with the case, whatever the case could be. It could be a salon, it could be this, it could be that. And what are they gonna do? They're going to have ten or fifteen or twenty people or whatever. The last one that we had, the meeting before the training meeting, the space was seven hundred square feet. That could accommodate, I believe, with Commissioner Cap's calculation, a hundred people. And the question came up, and the answer was, well, that's not the principal, um, request, the applicant, that was not the principal request of the applicant. Well, that's true, however, it does bump into the principal request of any applicant because it impacts the parking. And all of these seem to be in the downtown area. Well, there's two phenomenons. One is there is a need for small meeting rooms that are associated with individual applicants coming in. And it could be different businesses. It could be, I think one was a gym. And, uh, how do we address that and should, how do, do we have to incorporate something, think about it and incorporate something in the zoning ordinance? Number one. Number two, should there be any restriction or limitation or something that would uh, define uh, what the meeting space is? And should we allow it at all? Or should we open it up and allow it, but put some guidelines on it? I mean, I'm just opening up a question and.
It, it feels like exactly what we're just talking about with the child daycare centers. Right. And then it's a kick into B two, but not in B one.
Exactly.
You know, I don't know if you recall, there was a, um, it's a balloon shop now, but there was a case in South Gate in South Dixie where someone wanted a, you know, space, and the commissioner's limited it to a certain amount of people and a certain type of use and classes. She ended up closing because it was unreal, it, the proposal was unrealistic and it felt like it at the time, but the, you did place significant conditions on it, so yes.
I remember that case and the problem was is that she couldn't seem to propose anything definitive. She just said, well, I got the space, I might do this, might do that, might do that, might have these people in there, might sublet to these people. Like, what are you really gonna do there? Nobody knew.
And so it was very restrictive.
Initially, I thought it was another start of revenue by renting out the space to, to different people. And, and they meant in corporate meetings and socially.
We, we had a later case than the South Gate. We, we had a case, uh.
Honey, come on out.
Yeah. Right, right, so, yeah, same, same, same problem. The, the thing that I concerned me is even if you come up with these standards, you're, you don't give yourself the flexibility of saying, well, gee, you know, it might fit, you know, with, we, we might do this with twenty with, 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 um, enough space for twenty people, or we might not. I think it's a question of our discretion.
Well, it's really about parking, isn't it?
Well, at the end of the day, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's our biggest problem, and it's like, we, we might as well just say, hey, forget it, if, if the, if the elephant in the room is.
Well, in this case, she clearly is expecting a lot of people, like, and so it seems like a party, yeah, place.
Right.
Well, this is a, this is a situation of the dog, of the tail wagging and don't like. This last applicant, two meetings ago, seven hundred square feet. That's substantial. And if we allow that, does it jeopardize the original application? Because the impact of the parking is broader, not just what we considered for the original application. Because if they're having twenty-five, thirty, forty people, then if, if we stop to think about it, all of these people that are gonna be parking on the street from the brewery, from that one that had the seven hundred square feet, from the applicant that was just here, from all of the others, there's only so many on-street parking spaces. And that's going to create a problem of a different sort. So it's something that has to be thought out.
Restaurants on Ridge are already.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Making it, making it, um, a good problem, but a problem.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's.
So what's, what's gonna go in where, was it Vice? Used to be.
Where culture used to be is going to.
You know, we're sparking for them.
They used to use Saint Jones, but we don't have the agreement yet with Saint Jones and with Saint Johns now. So that has to be, the, the village doesn't have an agreement, so there is a public parking there now. But that's where the culture, um, restaurant used to use. But we had a lot of complaints about.
Well, I understand the new pastor over there is not real easy to get along with.
I haven't, I haven't had experience with that, but we're gonna.
Ask Bill.
But the, the, the question, the, the i- is there something that the board should be asking, not, not, I'm not talking about the applicants, but of the village uh, about parking?
I think that.
Nice parking garage next to the bullet trail would make it.
Well, that becomes sticky too, because we're gonna say, yeah, we'll allow a restaurant, we want a restaurant in the B one. And we got the same kind of parking problem. What's the difference between that and event space? Restaurants can seat forty, fifty people, event space is gonna have forty to fifty people.
That's the, that's the.
But why do, why are, you know, saying no to one and yes to the other?
Well, so the difference is, not every, not the village perspective, is that the restaurant is bringing in sales tax and this, that, eating tax, and so they are paying for the additional services that.
So is a parking garage eligible?
Parking garage is, it would be, yes, but.
Just yes, okay.
Depends on who you're talking.
Okay.
That's the story on right here.
Yeah, I've been told many times we have plenty of parking in downtown Homewood.
Yeah, no. But, you know, I.
And I keep asking, let's hope.
I mean, I'm sure you could visualize it, what I described, that space.
I have to ask a naive question, that I've asked before, to the east of Dixie, behind the stores on State Farm, there is a massive parking area, but it's not used. And I understand that those owners have been approached. What is the difficulty in, uh, those owners doing something? Because they have been contacted.
I think that.
And there's no movement, and the property sits wide open and unused.
So. Community church. North of the.
And we, like you said, we've approached the owners, and that someday. And we, like you said, we've approached the owners, that someday we'll. Sell this to someone and it's gonna be worth much more and, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that.
Would we ever get to an eminent domain?
Yeah, eminent domain.
Something to do when it's an occupied use. It's not technically abandoned, I'm paying.
But it's been vacant for decades.
The parking lot is, is empty, but the filmings are. They're not using for parking, but they are using this, the, the one that, the one, the former Delano's. Will, the village is pursuing that, only ownership of that property, but the others are occupied. And that parking lot is divided in the. Yeah, now that area, if you look at it on a map, then wow, this could be great parking.
I guess that would be an exercise, we allowed all of these, we approved all of these cases. Where on street, on streets, parking. And in the downtown area. And there's only so many spaces.
Yeah, how many things can you count that once?
If we've approved fifteen hundred to park on the street, and there's only a thousand spaces, what have we done to ourselves? I mean, I understand the argument with regards to. Daytime and nighttime and weekends and all that, still, all of that. And now these kinds of cases that are coming up are becoming more frequent and more use of the street, it's not gonna. Something's gotta give, that's all I'm saying. We have to plan something, something's gotta give.
All right, I will then entertain a motion to adjourn if uh.
Second.
Move.
And third.
I think you should stay till.
Who's the first?
Everybody's, but Mr. Johnson is going to be, he's gonna be staying until nine.
I refuse to leave. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's probably from, from our education, from, from uh, from our consultant. Trained us well, right? That's right.
Yeah, I have to call Tommy Ceteris and ask him.
Yeah, who knows? Cause the, it looks like the uh, dental has about thirty spaces and this place has enough, you know, this lot that I'm talking about.
Hi, everybody.